Okay.
All right, welcome. I'm gonna go ahead and call our November meeting. First up is review of the minutes. Are there any corrections or comments on the actual October 4th minutes that were posted in the meeting? Right, as there are no corrections to the minutes, I will deem the minutes approved by unanimous consent. Next, we have our support group update, and I see Kim Shield. How are you? Kim, may I get it over you? Kim, can you hear us? She, I don't think she can hear us. Okay, Mr. Smith, can you text Ms. Shield?
I don't know.
Okay, somebody text her and then we'll...
Kim, they're waiting for your report.
Okay, maybe we could do the sports report.
Yeah.
Actually, it's great that Coach Kim is on here because we've had a great ball. Well, let me start off with when did sports start this week? So our middle school, high school sports, winter sports have started. Trials, actually, most of the teams have already been formed, which is great. Middle school starts games next week, and then high school has...
Can you hear me?
You can hear me now.
Hi, everyone. Kim Shield here. PTO president at the high school, reporting on behalf of the PTO. Just wanted to say the PTO is humming along. We've transitioned from our back-to-school events and into our fall events, and we're getting geared up for our winter events. This past Friday, the PTO hosted its second staff event of the year. The event was an Italian buffet luncheon, and it was catered by Mama's Pizza. Overall, we were very happy with the event, and we received a lot of positive feedback from the staff as well. We've been making efforts to cater to as much of our staff's various dietary preferences as we can, and we felt that we mostly hit the mark and that it was very appreciated. As I said, we're now shifting gears now into our winter staff events, which close out the calendar year for us. One being our holiday staff gifting, which will kick off at the end of the month. And the other one, our very popular and always widely anticipated Cookie Walk, which will take place in December. In other news, we're happy to see that our teaching staff is utilizing the $250 PTO allotments. I would say approximately half of our students, half of our teaching staff across the three campuses have submitted receipts for reimbursements, and we're very pleased to see those continue to come in. And lastly, just a quick word about our lunch program, which, as some of you may know, we have three new lead volunteers running the lunch program this year, and they're doing an amazing job. And we're also very happy to report that our volunteer turnout for the year for our lunch programs has been very, very strong throughout all the campuses. So that wraps things up with me. Thank you so much. I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Mrs. Shield. A lot of good events going on with the PTO. Thank you for you and the other...
And I can't hear anyone, just so you know.
This is the evening of tech loopers. All right, with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Schlegel.
Good evening. I'll start fresh. So this week was trials for winter sports. Our high school, middle school have started off this year, most of them have already made teams. Our middle school starts off their year, their schedule next week. They have two games next week. Our high school basketball teams will be at some scrimmages and jamborees next week. I want to give a shout out to our fall sports. It was a great fall. We have two teams still playing. We have two teams that will be competing this Saturday at the state championship meet and match. First, we have our cross-country team, the boys and girls, will be competing up at Kernersville on Saturday for the 3A state championship. So our women's team actually won the Midwest Regional this past Saturday up in Kernersville. So I want to give a shout out to Coach Samara and his squad for a great season and good luck on Saturday. Also, I want to give Coach Shield, who has left. The tennis team, Coach Shield took over the tennis team this year. She used to be a middle school coach. She came in kind of last minute, take over the women's team. They are heading to the state championship, the 3A state championship in Burlington on Saturday. They won the 3A West Regional yesterday up at Franklin, which is about three hours and 30 minutes away. So they drove up there, won, got back late. The girls were in school this morning. So I want to wish Kim and her team good luck on Saturday as well. So it's been a great fall. I'm excited to see what winter does, and thank you.
Thank you, and good luck to our cross-country and tennis teams this weekend. Right, Mrs. Stein and Dr. Graham, you have a state and school report.
Yeah, I'm gonna start out with just a few brief things I would like to say. First of all, this is reminding me of the beginning of 2020. First, converting over to technology, so appreciate everybody's patience as we're going through that. So some good news to share, and then I'm gonna kick it over to Dr. Graham. But first of all, we were, thanks to Matt Schlegel and to Haley and to Officer Banano, who helped to compose a grant application to the Center for State Schools here in North Carolina. And I'm happy to report that we were awarded not only a supplement to help offset part of Officer Bowles' salary that we pay for for him to be here on campus, but also we received a little over $60,000 in other money that we're gonna be able to put towards equipment. So the first thing we're gonna be doing is upgrading our camera system at both the middle school and high school, and having better resolution, getting the right wiring, and basically the ability to better monitor. And then we'll add some cameras as well. The other thing we're going to be looking at, and they've begun the threat assessment, and then we have another person coming on campus, it's actually Dr. Graham's husband, who does that for a living, who's helping to volunteer his time as a parent to conduct, along with Officer Banano and HPD, another threat assessment, and we're gonna be having, it is a film that helps to make the glass in certain areas shatterproof, which is just another layer of protection when you're talking about our vestal areas, our media centers, different areas where we see potential weaknesses. So excited to have that opportunity. I do want to give a shout out to Sarah and her team and all of the staffs and different people who've stepped up to help plan our 25th student silver bration, which is coming up for our K through 8 students on Friday, November 18, and our high school students on Monday, November 21. And our 10th through 12th graders are also gonna have the opportunity to help volunteer at the younger grades, to help get some volunteer hours and give back and have that intermixing of our bigs and littles. So excited about that. There is gonna be a sign of genius also for our parents. And if any board members are interested, Sarah, is there anything else that I missed on that that would be good to share?
I just want to point out, I just want to say thanks to Jennifer Johnson. She worked with me to help better explain how this ties into our thrive goal. So this 25th year is the perfect time to marry the two together and do some things that speak to that. So, and thanks in advance to Mike Eastwood, he's gonna come help me explain this to our high school group next week, so.
And then I'm gonna ask Scott Gable or Lon to help here, because I can't see the screen, because this is just on this night is going. There's a video off to the left there that's on the hard drive that I would like to search so that we could share. So for those of you who did not see, let me set up. I'll tee up the video. So Lon, it's on the, it is right over to your left. You can see it, but I can't. There you go. Lovely. So there's a great video that one of the students from the high school helped to put together, and it was helping to show some of the 25 reasons for getting behind the, you know, 25 reasons, $25. So, yeah. You can go ahead and play. Thanks, Lon. Appreciate your help on that. So as you can see, we forget sometimes all the growth and the different things that we've been able to do. So it's pretty exciting to see the things that have happened. I just have to put the Zoom people back again. So I think Sarah would probably tell you that that campaign, we are getting good parent support behind that, and it's these efforts and other things that we're seeing postings on social media that are fun. Is there anything else Sarah you want to say about that?
Thanks for the support on that. If you need to do these types of things on...
Social media, please feel free to engage with those, because you remember, people don't give to institutions, people give to people. So it's all about, you know, I'm support, I see board supporting, I see my building administrators supporting in a way of thumbs up or a love, and that really, really goes a long way. So I want to shout out the kid, the senior, Evan Cottol, who made that video for us. He did a great job with that. Thanks, Sarah. And two other just quick things before I turn it over to Dr. Graham. First of all, I'd like to thank Huntersville Police Department. They, so we're, as we're constructing the field house, another one of our fundraising efforts. We've had to have some of the lights be down because of the source that they need to work on. And so it makes it pretty dark in the morning, so HPD has allowed us to borrow, they have a light tower that we're able to turn on in the mornings to make it a little bit more safer for staff and families until things kind of flip over with daylight savings. And lastly, for those of you who are unaware, our lottery process always begins on November 1st. It ends on January 30th. And this year, we are seeing a really quick takeoff on the number of applications. So after three days of the lottery application being open, we have just under 1,500 applications. And to compare that to last year, that's the highest we've ever had in that shortest period of time. Last year, after six days, we had 1,400. So, you know, hard to know if that's just a quick start, you never know, but it looks like we're off to a good start. And families do have until the end of January to put in those applications. So it is now my pleasure, as you know, Dr. Graham has stepped into a new role as our director of academics. And as we're talking about whole child, how we're meeting kids' needs, how we're seeing them individually, we thought it was important for the board to have an opportunity to learn a little bit more about how we are tracking with each kid, each of the kids individually, and can be responsive to those needs. So Dr. Graham, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Good morning. Good morning. That's what we do. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to share a little glimpse into what's going on here at Great Normal Charter. We are just continuing to be committed to the whole child, which I know is something that speaks to what we're doing, even with the board initiatives, and continuing to foster growth and achievement. That is always our focus, growth not just in academics, but also social, emotional well-being. Just to look at where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. As you all know, we have maintained a grade of A with our state board of education, our report card grade. And so where we've been is a high-performing charter school, and that has been recognized to various sources, DPI, US News and World Report, as well as NEACH. So we have been recognized for our accomplishments for the duration of the time that we've had that report card grade. Where we are, speaking to our now, we're still a high-performing charter school. And at this point, we're really trying to embrace and implement a framework of support that's really more strategic to addressing the various needs of our students. We understand that the needs of children have changed, the demographics of our children have changed, their learning styles, their social, emotional well-being. And so we understand that there's a time for us now to be a little more strategic in how we address those needs for our students, and that we always have a goal of where we're going. And we're seeing the A and the A+, but the A+ means that we're just really trying to fine-tune and refine what we have in place currently and how we can best meet students. So we're gonna always be a high-performing charter school, but we want to make certain that all students and teachers feel that this is the right fit. We'll understand people will make changes because they'll say, "Well, it just wasn't the right fit." And you always, people always have the option to do that, but we want to make certain that we have the resources and the support in place for it to be the right fit for not just our students, but also our teachers to continue with their growth and success. So when we're talking about embracing the whole child, one state initiative is MTSS, which is, the acronym is for multi-tiered systems of support. It has been around and has been called different things, but what we wanted to do is make certain that we are implementing that framework here at LNC. And there are three different components to MTSS, one being universal instruction, which is something that we have always prided ourselves in making sure that we are providing high-quality instruction to the students, that we hire and retain high-quality teachers, and then also we differentiate instruction. We're seeing now more than ever the need for us to continue to focus on differentiation of instruction, because once again, the needs of our students continues to evolve and change. The second component is universal scanners. And a universal screener is a tool that we use, and it's normally three times a year, where we're trying to see where children are at the beginning, at the middle, and then towards the end. And so the universal screeners that we have in place currently are M-class for our elementary students, MAP for our elementary and middle school students, and also mental health surveys. And we wanted to acknowledge that we are continuing to expand that MAP universal screener to the high school for next year, so that we will have that continued support from elementary to high school. And then finally, the universal progress monitoring, which is something we're using. These are different programs and tools that we use to monitor the progress of students, both academically as well as socially-emotional. This is not in this awesome list, but these are just some progress monitoring tools that we use to continue to monitor student academic growth and achievement. And this is like a diagram, so for those of you who are visual learners, it kind of helps us see and put together what the MTSS process looks like. And it's always a continuance. We're never going to, it's continually evolving. It's always a process. So we're always defining what we need. We're looking to analyze, we're implementing, and we're evaluating. And so we want to continue that cycle. You will see those three cores in the middle, and those three areas that we focus on, once again, is academics, behavioral health and attendance, and social, emotional. And so we have really focused strongly on academics for the time that we've been a charter school, but now we're shifting to make certain that we are giving just as much attention to the behavioral health and attendance of our students, as well as their social, emotional well-being. And you will see three tiers of support that our students will fall in. So there's a differentiated core, which is the majority of our students, that they're all getting differentiated instruction, but that's about 80% of our students. So that's the largest portion. And then you'll see us moving up gradually to strategic support. So this can range between 10% to 15% of our students who need a little more than what the core provides. So that's more strategic or supplemental support. And then you have that top tier, which is intensive support. These are our students who really need support above and beyond what the average or normal student would get, and that is probably around 5%. And what we're trying to do is even in this grade of A, really hone in on those two tiers that are a smaller portion of our population, but still very important to make sure that we are getting, that they're receiving the support that they need. And we're always trying to have a universal language of support, and we're saying the same, speaking the same language at all three campuses. So there's not just a very experience for students. Support does look different, but it's still universal as far as making sure we provide those opportunities. And this is just another list of interventions and support that we have in place currently. One thing we're always doing, data sometimes is a crazy word for people, because you can get scared to just have all this data and not know what to do with it. And so we're being strategic with the team that we have in place to provide data, but also give those teachers an opportunity to talk about it and know what to do with it, to inform instruction. We want to also increase our collaborative planning, to not just have them planning within their buildings, but also more vertical planning between the three campuses, professional development. We have PD your way, where teachers are able to choose the PD that they want, but also we can be more strategic in offering PD for people who need support in different areas. And then having those conferences nighttime. Nighttime, we spoke about last year, that was something that we incorporated in our schedules at the middle and high school to provide that extra targeted support for students. And then you'll see the different interventions and support that are at the various schools. LLI Elementary School, the intervention and enrichment block, which is very similar to our nighttime at the middle and high school, and then after-school tutoring and Funchess Fellows. And I want to shout out Mr. Funchess, he took on, we love when people are, they have initiative and innovator. And so he himself targets, he'll look at all the students who have performed, maybe a failed a class or two in the first quarter. He reviews grades, he takes it upon himself to call them in to be another level of support. So it's just, it's been beyond the disciplinarian. It's more, how can I help you in your endeavors here at the school? So he works alongside the counselors for that. And then there's a platform that we will be introducing and rolling out. There's a soft launch coming, which is Branching Minds, and that will give us a full picture of all the students, all of the data in one place, so we don't have to keep going here and there to try to find out what's going on with the student, and we'll all be housed in one central location. So we went to a conference last week, an A- conference. I was able to go with the assistant principals, and it was an amazing experience. And Ms. Stein came and visited us, and she joined us on Thursday. And there was a speaker there who really spoke about her experience as an ESL teacher and her journey to become a citizen, very passionate. And she ended her presentation with this quote, "We need to uncover the source and restructure schools as healing spaces that incorporate equitable systems to support the cultures, identities, and strengths of all learners." All means all. And there was something that we had that even bring more clarification to the all means all is each and every. So we don't want to just talk about the masses. We want to make sure that we're individualizing our support so that each and every student and each and every teacher feel like this is the right fit for them. So that's what we're doing in academics. Does anyone have any questions?
Great job, Dr. Graham. As you can see, some really great work being done. Really kudos to our teachers. And MTSS, as Dr. Graham said, has been around for a bit. Before Dr. Graham got her role, Melanie was leading that lots of, along with several of our teachers, including Skyler, who was in here, helping to formulate how we're gonna do that here at Charter. And it is a shift. It's a, it's a big shift for our teaching staff, but they have been really great about collaborating and coming together, and really looking at how do we differentiate. So I think that's all we have.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Graham. Next up, we have strategic committee updates. So I'll hand it over to Mrs. Johnson to talk about.
Sure. I just want to point out that I think throughout the meeting so far, I hear a thread of thrive coming through on so many initiatives. And it's so great to hear, right? Because there are some specific things that the committee is doing, but when it's really taking hold in the culture and things are cropping up and it's, you know, infiltrating all the different things we do, I think that's a really good sign of success. On my slide here, you see a couple quotes on the side, just to remind us of why we're doing this work and the focus of this committee. For the first time this week, I was just mentioning this to Nicole, there's a pretty thorough study out on how high school students who experienced a pandemic when they were in high school, how they're performing in college, because now they have real data on that learning loss, the difference in how those students are performing as freshmen versus the students who had a complete high school experience before they went to college. And it's concerning, and it's not only about the learning loss, but it's about the socio-emotional health and the differences. And, you know, college professionals talking about those differences they see. And that's why we're doing this. This is about focusing on the whole child. This is about making sure that when our students graduate, that they, they are their complete selves, and that we're doing all we can to help them find a sense of self and a sense of community. So the initiatives that we have in this group ladder up to those things. And so I pointed out, just a reminder of our goals on the left there, that we want to specifically help students discover their passions and explore interests. We need to make sure they feel supported and celebrated, and we want them to graduate with an appreciation for experiences in leadership and service. So we made some great strides this month as a committee, and we've really honed in on this year. Like, this is a big initiative, right? And like I said, we're seeing it take hold in the culture. Two specific things that we want to achieve this year in terms of celebrating and recognizing. We want to expand the Knight of Honor program, and so we have a subcommittee forming to look at that and look at how we celebrate students for their accomplishments and recognize them for those. And if we're gonna talk about Funchess Fellows, I'm also gonna mention, he doesn't know how to do this, but the Mavety moment that I just learned about this week. Because, again, this is not part of the committee work, but you're seeing this, this effort and the spirit of thrive, you know, take hold all throughout our community. And so I've learned that Mr. Mavety is reaching out, and so to some of the kids that maybe wouldn't get the Knight of Honor, but have shown growth in grades and behavior, get a moment with Mavety. I think there's some donuts, some juice, right? Yeah. I don't, I mean, go ahead. Yeah, give him the mic.
Yeah, I appreciate the shout out. Mavety moments is basically a moment where we, as teachers, really identify the students that have shown this tremendous growth in a quarter. And at the end of the quarter, they're recognized for their, whether it's academics or their behavior, social, emotional. But we really try to just shine a light, and it may not be the Knight of Honor. And there's a thing that I can't get that, but it's just a moment to really show like, hey, you matter. We recognize where you've been and where you are now, and I think that we had our first one after the first quarter, and it really, just they were like, oh my God, why am I here? But it was really, and I was like, your teachers see you, so keep doing what you're doing. And they just, they were just very happy. We had donuts and we talked, and, you know, moving forward, we may, you know, play basketball, we may run out of track, whatever it is that they want to do. But I think it's just a moment that life comes to those, that a better school and a back-to-life thrive initially with the whole child.
Yeah, thank you. Exciting to see these things pop up. The other specific update from this committee is career exploration. And so Mr. Funchess did host a great career event in the fall, and the committee has talked about how we can enhance that, maybe even do it in, I don't want to get ahead of the committee, but we're looking at what grades we can do that in. Maybe another second activity in the spring. How can we use some of the technology and information we have, specifically with Naviance at the high school, to just enhance and grow? And sometimes, I guess what we're learning is sometimes the kids kind of need some ideas. If they're not quite all ready to self-select. And so we've got a lot of energy and activity from the teachers, students, and parents on the committee. And we're channeling them this year towards those two things, because I think those could be meaningful wins. And just glad to celebrate, recognize and celebrate some of the other things happening in the community beyond the committee as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Chapman.
ID, DNA. Sorry, can you hear me? So I'm really kind of drafting back on with that, with that, Johnson. That we are also seeing with ID, DNA, lots of crossovers with not only thrive, but also with what Dr. Graham just talked about. And, you know, when we're looking at not just teaching to all, but teaching to every individual student, I'm very excited to share with everyone that this past October, on the 17th, Nixon Company came in and did a staff training on culturally responsive teaching. And we had a great turnout for that event. And I'll go ahead and let Ms. Stein and also Mr. Funchess, if you'd like to jump in as well, share that they were both present for the staff training, how that went.
Yeah, and shout out to all our teachers. Yeah. And shout out to all our teachers who gave part of their workday to, to participate in that. This is the second year we've been working with Nixon and Company. And it is the progression, um, in getting some feedback from our teachers of, again, how do, they, they're looking for support and ideas on how to hit all of, you know, each and every student, right? And really figuring out, um, you know, what, what is best going to reach those, those individual students. So, um, Nixon Company came in and, and did that and, and did, um, we had three separate workshops for, for those folks. And we're looking forward to having them back, um, in the, I think it's February timeframe, um, to continue, continue that work. So we're excited. Anything else, Mr. Funchess?
I think it's end of January, but, um, do you want to talk about next Wednesday? So Nixon Company is coming out next Wednesday for the family engagement night. We are, are facilitated for that night. Which is going to speak to our community about the work we've been doing at ID E and A. It's an opportunity for our community to see what we're doing and also see what we're not doing. As there's always misconceptions about this work. Um, it's, it's an opportunity for them, if they so desire to get that, get those questions answered. So, um, Nixon Company will have a presentation, um, sort of about what we're doing, but also there'll be some time for them to if there are questions, um, to sort of answer those for families. Or in that place that, that they present will answer some of those questions as well. But we have, uh, plans going forward as far as how to sort of keep that line of communication open with that consultation group.
And so I know on the flyer, it says that it's family engagement night. We also sent an invitation to all of our staff and teachers that, you know, whether they have due here themselves, that we would love for them to attend this event. Um, and also we would love to have all of our board members attend as well. So we just really look forward to a great evening and discussion around ID E and A. Um, in terms of working with the students in October, it was Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, and in the high schools, a group of students had to go out to a WFAE forum where they were discussing, um, the impact and what was going on in the community with the Latinos in the Charlotte area. They really found that, um, event really interesting. It also was opened up at the end for Q and A. Um, so they're looking in terms of the future of going out to these different, um, events. Also in the high school, um, the diversity council partnered with the Spanish club. Um, we talked about that a lot with ID E and A, kind of about this working together, not just having ID diversity club events, but working with the different clubs within the high school. At the middle school, there was a drop everything in talk around Spanish heritage. They were doing a lot of dancing, I heard. The QR code activate, someone told me that there was, uh, a coconut in the media center and the kids could come out and there was like a QR code on it to have different questions related to it. They're really trying to engage the students, um, in learning and in unique ways. Um, they also, also did cost making and rough studies. Um, and then in the elementary school, as you can see on this slide here, we've got several pictures. Diwali, um, was happening. And so as we were talking about family engagement across ID E and A, really having that be a prominent, important aspect of our outreach, uh, this year with our committee. We actually had a family come forward and volunteer to come into the elementary school, talk about what Diwali was. Also, I think shared that they were doing some dance moves. As you can see, um, they have the traditional dress. Um, and so we also heard a story from another family about the fact that their daughter actually wouldn't engage with them about their cultural traditions. But she came home and shared that a teacher was talking about it. And then all of a sudden wanted to engage in a conversation with the parent. So we kind of think of that working like from the family to the school, but we're also seeing and also working reverse. Um, and so the family was very excited to share that with us about that experience. In terms of moving of what we achieved with, um, our continued practice and research, as Mr. Funchess said, we're continuing to consult with Nixon and Company. They did the training with the staff and also they did surveys. So we're getting the results back from the surveys and looking at that. And then also we had our first ID E and A family newsletter come out. We hope everyone was able to see that via email. Um, if you weren't able to see it, we are also going to be archiving those on our website. So plans to come for November. Mr. Funchess went ahead and shared about the family engagement night on the night. Um, it's going to be Arab American heritage. Uh, I know that the diversity club at the high school was looking for a professor from UNCC to come in and be a guest speaker. Also, they are starting on holidays around the world. Um, and there was also a bulletin board that I think was being created in the high school to talk about stereotypes, different stereotypes, and also how you can correct them. In terms of our continued consultation with Nixon and Company, again, we're already starting to discuss our next quarterly newsletter that'll come out. And also the feedback from the professional development training. Um, and so again, we just are really looking forward to our first family engagement night. Um, we also wanted to clarify that while it says family engagement, um, the content, um, that will be presented is really geared towards adults and maybe high schoolers. So if you were able to find childcare for your, your students, uh, younger teens, that would be wonderful. But if you, if it's between not coming or coming and bringing your children, if you would prefer you come. And just make sure that they have something to read or an iPad. Because we really are looking forward to meeting with everybody on that event. So, thank you.
Thank you to both of our strategic committees for the updates and for the great work underway. That concludes our agenda. So I will adjourn the meeting at 7:39. Thank you.